Which one you call?
Yeah, I'll show you that.
Thirty-three, thirty over, thirty-three thousand. Maybe thirty-four, but it's capable of thousands of points.
Thirty-four.
Yeah, thirty, thirty, oh, there, but it was in like, uh, thirty, uh, twenty-three, three.
I must listen to the point, it was a such shot, we assume the administration.
Yeah, that's. Yeah, yeah, two years, I only had a body, between the sides, I mean, like, five percent. I don't get too, I don't want to get, I don't want to give you money, but I think you want to leave me down, I mean, you can't, you can't prove the whole. It doesn't put, it's invisible. They're like, uh, what, the, Callahan.
No, they just look at all of them.
So do you remember, it's probably associated.
Good evening and welcome to Lowell's City Board of Appeals for the City of Lowell Public Hearing, January twenty-four, twenty-twenty-two. We appreciate your patience and apologize for the delay in our start this evening. We had a scheduled meeting in the other room and that was being recorded for public access as well. Due to the pandemic, we are currently holding the meeting by hybrid, in person, Zoom, and phone-in. So members of the public have an opportunity not only watch the meeting, but they can speak on behalf of a petition through Zoom or phone-in and that will be refereed through the clerk, as in past practice. Yeah, if we're gonna have a roll call.
Chairman Perrin.
Present.
Vice Chair Peck.
President.
Member Callahan.
Present.
Member McCarthy.
Present.
Member Brier.
Present.
Member Proko.
Present.
Member Noreen.
Present.
We have a full, full board meeting this evening. That being said, if, as we move forward, if you have a cell phone, please place it on vibrate, take phone calls, and have conversations in the hallway, not, in order to not to interrupt the flow of the meeting. If you wish to speak on behalf of petition, if you are here, please come to the lectern, state your name and address for the record. If you are Zoom or calling, please state your name and address for the record as well. I'm gonna move right into the business under continued business. We have ZBA twenty-twenty-one dash thirty-four variances, Julio Cortez at two forty-two Lakeview Avenue, Section five-point-one and Section five-point-three. Mr. Julio Cortez has applied to the zoning Board of Appeals to demolish a vacant single-family home in bakery at two forty-two Lakeview Avenue and replace them with a two-family home. The property is located in the traditional multifamily TMF zoning district and requires multiple variances under Section five-point-one for the front and side yard setbacks, minimum lot area, a minimum lot area per dwelling in, under Section five-point-three for landscaped open space and any other relief required on those Lowell zoning ordinance. Good evening, Counselor.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, David Plunkett from four ninety-one Dutton Street in Lowell, representing the applicant Julio Cortez. With me tonight is Mr. Cortez, as well as Norman Curlup, who is the architect for the, for the project, who will go through the details of the proposed building. And, but before I turn it over to Norman, Mr. Chairman, just to give a little synopsis, a little outline of what we're dealing with here. If I could ask for that photo to be displayed, if it's possible at this time. So, board members, I don't know if, you know, if you're familiar with the site. This was the location of the old Toblosky Bakery. My father happened to grow up two stories, two houses down, and I remember as a kid going and he, my grandfather had a pear tree in his backyard and Toblosky's Bakery was two stories, two houses up. So years, so this is something that had been in operation for many, many years. And actually, the daughter of the Toblosky family had just sold the property, so there was, it was still in the Toblosky family up until about two years ago, year or two years ago. So, so this is a longstanding oper, you know, property ownership. And in the property right now, the, the lot itself is basically covered significantly by the existing home and the bakery building behind it. The property has gone into significant disrepair. And it's a situation where at this time, the proposal that's going to be presented to you tonight is to demolish the existing buildings and build a two-family dwelling. The two-family dwelling would be in keeping with what is in allowed use within the, I think it's the TMF district. And it's a situation where there are a number of variances that are going to be required. But when you look at the protocols for the grant of a variance, you know, the, the question is whether, you know, this is a parcel that has some unique features that are not carried over throughout the, through the neighborhood itself. And certainly, the, the fact that this is the site of a long-term commercial operation in which there was this commercial use in conjunction with the residential use for many years, you know, makes that somewhat of a unique situation here. The fact that the proposal here would allow the demolition of what has now, unfortunately, and if you look at the pictures, become an eyesore in detriment to the neighborhood, to be able to be replaced with a very beautiful new structure, which would be an upgrade to the neighborhood and of benefit to those in the area by replacing what's there now with the proposed structure. And also, I think that it's important to point out that, you know, the proposal, you know, this is not just a run-of-the-mill, you know, box that's to be placed on the, on the site. The architect will go over the details in which, you know, if you look at the plans, this has some very, you know, nice architectural details that you have bay windows, you have other structural details that you, you might not ordinarily find on someone that's looking to just, you know, throw something in there and do it with as little, you know, effort as possible. This is something which Mr. Cortez is actually looking to invest significantly in making this a structure that would be a great upgrade and benefit and, you know, significant positive impact to the neighborhood. So in terms of the criteria relative to the unique nature of this lot, and without substantial, substantial detriment to the public good, clearly just the opposite, that we're taking an area, a parcel in which you, you've had a dilapidated, you know, multiple structures and replace it with a beautiful new structure. And with, you know, the other element in terms of without nullifying this substantially derogating from the intent of the zoning, certainly it's not because in, in the zoning district, a two-family structure would be allowed. So I, I think that, you know, it's clear that this would meet all the criteria for the necessary grant of variances to carry out the upgrade and build-out, rebuilding of this, of this lot. I had some other plans to show back and, you know, that this goes back to, you know, nineteen, the, the registered land plan from nineteen sixteen shows the, the build-out of the parcel, even going back to that point in time, was significantly covered by structures. And in the nineteen forty-nine layout for the taken of what is now the VFW Highway, which is now directly behind this. And to keep in mind that this area was, you know, where the VFW was now, used to be some mills. Knowing from, you know, family law that, that there were some great baseball games back there for the neighborhood kids. And, you know, so it, it's a situation where this is now immediately abut in what's the VFW. And actually, that side roadway, unfortunately, you know, they, and they're not trying to make use of it, but it, it's not a a parcel that's belongs to, I think there's some reference that it belongs to the church. It's not the church. It was part of the Merrimack Manufacturing Company entryway. And in nineteen forty-nine layout, they actually, the city in nineteen forty-nine refers to it as Beharrell Avenue. So the, the city, so, and Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll leave it up to you as to whether you think that might be of any value to the board members to take a look at, at these plans.
Certainly.
If you believe so, I'll, I'll submit them, submit them to you.
Thank you, sir.
And just in, in the nineteen forty-nine layout, just to clarify, I, I did a highlight, but then after I highlighted, I realized I highlighted the wrong lot, so I put a, an arrow beside the lot, that's the locus parcel. And, and just put an asterisk at the area that's the way beside, the area beside this parcel, which the city in the nineteen forty-nine layout for the taken of the VFW, they referred to it as Navinow. Again, not that it's being utilized in any manner for this proposal, but just to give you a sense of, of this area. And, and I think that could be taken into account, though, in terms of some of the requests for variance in terms of setbacks and things of that sort. So, you know, in, in summation, this is going to be a significant, significant improvement to the, to this particular site. And the net effect to the neighborhood would be, with this type of upgrade, generally, there is a positive domino effect, so to speak, in terms of the neighborhood. Because when you're, when valuations are made for property, they look not only to the particular parcel, but they will look to parcels within the neighborhood. They'll look into the neighborhood as a whole. So this would result in a, a major upgrade to the neighborhood. So with that, Mr. Chairman, if it's all right with you, if I could turn it over to Norman Curlup to go over the details of the plan itself.
Certainly, thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Norman Curlup. I'm the architect. I've done some work in the city of Lowell some time ago, including some renovation of fire stations, historic and so on. But in this case, we have a unique situation of a property which was mixed-use and it was overwhelmingly covering the, the property as percentage of lot coverage. So we're trying to reduce that at the moment. And I would like to emphasize that the way this building relates to the streetscape, it, it doesn't, it's not harmonious with the other houses. Now, I would like, if possible, to look at some of the other street photos. Yeah, if you'd like these two.
I only have this one.
Oh, you only have this one? Oh, okay. So most of the, most of the houses on this street, they have a gable end elevation. They also have a corbel detail at the front of the building. And they have some small details regarding the small spindles that they have over the entrance. They all are close to the sidewalk, within about four foot. And in this situation, we are having the front of the building narrower than what it was before, what, what it is now, I mean to say. And the architectural elevations, if we can go to that, have some features that will highlight what I'm explaining now. Do we have any front, front elevation there? Okay. If you see, at the eve lines at each corner, there is a corbel. And at the entrance porch, you see the spindles below the eve. And also, there are small corbels over there. And some of the neighboring opposite houses, they have these details. So we try to restore that characteristic in this particular house. Now, on the side elevation, if we may go to those, in the middle, you see a bay window projecting out. Now, in this situation, the floor of the bay window is not projecting out. It's only the window itself. And as you were aware of, zoning regulations allow a bay window to, to project into the, into the setback or whatever. And the purpose of this window is to break the monotony of that side elevation and to break the roof line, which makes the massing of the building more pleasant. And you can see at the front that I have, I mean, at the back, I have the corbels at the back, too, over the back porch. So said all in together, we try to establish the massing and the features of the building to be in harmony with the characteristics of the neighborhood. And one important thing about the side street that was mentioned. We've been using the side street, my surveyors, my engineers, they come and park their car. That side street is now, probably not technically now, it's kind of continued use. It was used before by public. It was used also for access to this property. So for technical reasons, we're not able to say this is a city street until the records are probably more clarified regarding that. But in practice, it is. It's continued use for the public, particularly by people operating in this area and also in this building, in this lot. Now, having said all together, as you are aware of and as the council reported, this development will initiate some rejuvenation in the area. So I believe other homes will be coming to upgrade their properties. I did have some private meetings with, with the neighbors when I was there. And I was discussing the project and they were in agreement with me. I don't know if there is any feedback from anybody at this point. But this was the result of my personal contact with them. There's one Chinese lady next door, so I had to use sign language to communicate, but I tried my best to establish good communication with the neighbors. So all in all, we're trying to fulfill the intent of all the requirements of the zoning Board of Appeals to have a successful project. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Any other comments at this time, Counselor?
No, Mr. Chairman, just, you know, if there were any questions for details, certainly we'd be open to try to provide information that may be, you know, subject to the questions of the board members.
Thank you. That being said, I'd like to open up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? Zoom call or call-in call in favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
My name is Robert Hunt, forty-eighth Florence Avenue, Lowell, Massachusetts. Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
Members of the board, and thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Again, my name is Robert Hunt and I am the co-chairman of St. Casimir's Church, a director butter to two forty-two Lakeview Avenue. And I first want to say that I am glad that someone is looking to rebuild this parcel, two forty-two. It's been dilapidated for a long time. Most recently, we've had drug addicts, homeless people. Even now, the fence has been kind of torn down that Mr. Cortez put up. And people are still getting into the, into the back area. But I believe that the plans presented tonight do not, in my estimation, meet that goal. The project does not meet minimum lot size, minimum lot L A D U, minimum frontage, minimum front yard setback. And I'd first like to reference a package that was made by the architect, Mr. Norman Curlup. And he called it his brief synopsis by Norman Curlup, Architect of the Project. And this was in the package that's up online right now. I'm sure you must have a copy of it. Okay, and item number five, the proposed design is consistent with the styles, the proportions, and the finishes of the neighboring homes. Well, all the homes to the left of two forty-two Lakeview Avenue, meaning two thirty-six, two twenty-eight, two twenty, two eighteen, two fourteen, and one ninety Lakeview Avenue are all single-family dwellings. The next house in that line is one eighty-two to one eighty, and that's a duplex. And this duplex was built in two thousand and two, and it sits on six thousand square feet of land. The proposed parcel that Mr. Cortez has bought is only forty-six hundred square feet. And on this six parcel, this six thousand square foot, has one thousand square feet of living space up and down. They're duplexes, the side by side. Two bedrooms, one and a half baths, and parking underneath. And there are more examples like this all through the neighborhood, less than two hundred feet away, at nine Coburn, eighty-three West Third Street. And all of these homes are either rentals or condos and built between two thousand and two and two thousand and four, not the older style ones that are built around the turn of the century. And you know what all these places have in common? Two bedrooms, one and a half baths. Those are what are in common for that. So I fail to see how the design is consistent. A two-bedroom unit makes more sense and might even meet the existing zoning requirements as it stands. I'd like to go back to L one of the slides that were presented. And L one is the outside, okay? So on L Y, L one, page L one, the revised parking change with the change of access driveway from the original plan. As in a butter, I'm concerned with tenants and/or visitors using the St. Casimir's driveway to be able to park after hours and during hours. The plantings on that particular slide show that the plantings on the, go halfway up and stop. Currently, the access, the driveway is accessed by elderly, handicapped parishioners, and considered our handicapped entrance. We have a lift in the basement that brings them up there. Now, just to be clear, for the last thirty-s somewhat years, the church has plowed that road, which is Beharrell Ave. But I did spend time with the engineer today, and he says that the city no longer recognizes it as a street of their own. That it's been, it no longer is part of it. So I spoke with Joe up in engineering, and that's what he said. The driveway is accessed, you know, I could, I rather concerned with the new proposed driveway is that on an undersized lot with an oversized building, where will the snow go? I'll tell you where the snow will go. In referencing slide L one, we believe that a plow will push the snow between the property on the left-hand side and the house, proposed house, turn right in the driveway with a park casa, and continue on dumping the snow on the asphalt driveway. Now, in order to, this would be on a handicap area. So the elderly and handicapped people will no longer be able to use that road to get in. We therefore request for that particular area, if it goes for, a six-foot stockade fence to secure the possible likely access point to the driveway. We feel that the proposal does not live up to Section eleven-point-two-point-three of the Lowell zoning ordinance and mass general law, Section ten, and humbly ask that you deny the current proposal as submitted. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time. Any others wishing to speak in opposition? Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me have a few minutes to discuss this project. My name is Stan Cosidlow, five Nottingham Road, Tinswell, Massachusetts. I'm a member of the St. Casimir's Parish Committee. Some of my concerns are going to be the same as Mr. Hunt's, but I do, we're a little different group. And I just want to get, make sure our opinions are heard. The main one, the Mr., one of the two main ones, is the home is just a bit too big for the lot. We're very happy a project has been proposed for the lot. And, you know, we would like to see something there. Then obviously, the decrepit building that's there, that this one is just a bit too much for the neighborhood. And another part that's very, very important is that road. There's been, I don't know, it's not clear between the bakery, let's say, and the church, who owns that road. All I know that for at least thirty to forty years, it's sort of been maintained and plowed by the church. And when you go into the church, you know, like in a lot of cases, churches have many handicapped and disabled people that we have that use that road and enter into the side of the church. It's very important that, you know, that they, the handic- It's very important that, you know, that they, the handicaps have access to that road and are able to go into the church, or the church or church functions in the basement of the church. The, the current building, the way it is, yeah, where is that, where is the snow going to go? And also, I'm not sure of the proposal, is that an access way to get into the building? I mean, I know they've got a driveway on the other side, they're calling that a driveway, but is this road meant to be, it's a question for, you know, maybe the architect, is that meant to be an access way to the house? So that's the question I'm posing, and I'm saying that that wouldn't be a practical, given the handicap to access. People can't park there. You know, I mean, it can't be used. You have three bedrooms, which probably, I mean, you might have up to six cars, only have parking for four. Where's the overflow going? In that driveway? So, you know, there needs to be something with a delineation. And I know Mr. Hunt brought up the fence and that that area be cut off, you know, to that road. I mean, that would at least make sure that the parishioners, handicapped parishioners had access to it, it wouldn't be blocked. So that's one thing that we're looking for, is any part of the proposal, that that's not a throughway for that property. Okay? I think that's it. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? In Zoom or by phone? In opposition? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Sir, if you may, return with counsel. So if you could step us through the concerns for the Bee-Herald Road and, as I look at my notes to follow up on...
Thank you for the...
If you could just address, just address, so we're going to talk about the access road, we're going to talk about snow removal.
Okay. I just like to make a request. If it's implied that one of the neighbors has the right to use that road, why it doesn't mean other neighbors along that road should be denied that right?
So I believe the specific question was, is it going to be utilized? Is there an intention for that to be utilized as parking?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I could address that issue...
Certainly, thank you, counsel.
At the time of the presentation, we referenced the roadway, but made clear that in no way are we using that roadway because of the question that exists relative to its status. If the church is claiming that they have a right, I heard that they, they said that they found that the city said that they don't consider it a road anymore, but, you know, that's, that's certainly not a definitive determination as to who has the rights. But understanding the nature of the question of that area, we have absolutely no use of that roadway in any manner as part of these plans here. It's there, but we, the only access into this site is through the proposed driveway. And, you know, in terms of the snow storage, you know, we would say that all the snow, same as with any property in the city, we're going to have to plow it and store it on-site, and if it gets too voluminous, we would be certainly willing to have as a condition that if the snow storage impedes or interferes with, you know, access to the property, our property, we're not going to use, you know, that, that roadway is not part of the plan. It's adjacent to it, but it's not part of the plan, that we would agree to say that we would remove from the site, you know, the snow as, as necessary. But, you know, again, I think one of the, you know, points that struck me during the presentation for the, from the neighbors, and, you know, we certainly welcome any input, but, you know, they, they did reference the fact that this is, you know, people using drugs, you know, it's, it's a, you know, it's a, it's a site that is in need of cleanup. And one of the things, again, going back to the presentation, this is not just a little, you know, we're not talking about just putting a cookie cutter box on the site. As the architect pointed out, we're recreating, you know, the intent is to recreate certain architectural details. The detail is talking about that the siding is going to be, you know, cement board, which is known for its durability, it withstands, you know, water decay, insect, you know, infestation, everything else. So this will be something that would maintain the very pristine appearance for a significant period of time. So these architectural details, these details to the construction, you know, these are details that are, you know, there's an economic component to that, that you need to be able to justify the type of money that's going to go into this. And as I said, this is not contrary to what is allowed in this zoning district. The issue in terms of the lot dimensions, you know, that, that's what we have. That's what we have. That's what's there. And what's there, right now, has a home and a commercial building, has two structures on it, one a single-family and the second, a commercial bakery. That's, that's what was on that, that site. So to get back to the initial question, though, there is absolutely no use of that roadway between this parcel and the adjoining parcel owned by the church.
Thank you very much, counsel. That being said, I'd like to open up to the board. Van?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, I, I just want to say thank you to the applicant, the architect, Mr. Plunkett, very detailed plans of what's going to go on there on the site. You know, I, I totally understand where the neighbors coming from in terms of, you know, they, they want to see something, you know, a little smaller, a little more compact. I actually think this is a, a good compromise to the existing infrastructure there right now. It's a, you know, a dilapidated building, you know, and, and I think the, Mr. Plunkett and, and the petitioner has, has the best interest, not in terms of just, you know, putting a lot there and just doing whatever they want, but, you know, I think they're trying to make it the, the best build-out for, for the whole, for the whole area and then the city as a whole, I think it's going to add, just not to, to that street, to, to the neighborhood. So I, you know, I actually think that this would be a good addition, so those are my comments, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Sean?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chairman. First and foremost, I mean, I think we're all in agreement that this, this piece of property and what was on it certainly needs to be revised and rejuvenated, because it's been a blight for many, many, many years. I'm not sure how long it's been condemned by the fire department, you know, with the big X on it. So welcome, any, any project on this welcoming, would be welcoming to try to revive, revitalize this piece of property. That being said, I understand we're in a, we're in a TMF zone. We're looking for a two-family here, but I'm, I'm trying to understand why, why can't, this can't be to the, to the neighbor's point, attorney Plunkett, and to the architect, why can't we do, why can't this be a one-family? You're looking for a lot of relief here for a TM, and the TMF section, I mean, you're, for a two-family, you know, you need to meet, you're proposing 45, a minimum lot size, the two-family required is 6,000, you're proposing 4,500. For a one-family dwelling is 4,500. You'd be meeting the requirements for that. You won't need a variance for that. For minimum lot area per dwelling unit would be 2,500, you're looking at 2298, minimal, that would be minimal sought for lot area per dwelling unit. You would need the frontage, which is 80. And I, I mean, if they can adjust it, I mean, I don't know what the, what the set yards, the setbacks would be if you adjusted it to a one-family. But it seems to me like you may get a lot of the benefit out of it. And I understand there's a lot, there's a lot to deal with as far as demolishing and reconstructing the property, because you not only have the front house slash bakery, you also have the rear area that would have to come down as well as long as, and then parking is becoming an issue too, especially in a lot that size. So I don't, maybe, I don't know, can, can you speak to why? I'm, I'm understanding of this possibly an economic thing. Is there any other thing, why we can't, why this can't, they can't have a one-family on this parcel of land where it's closer to meeting the requirements of zoning as far as a one-family in the TMF zone? And it would fit in with the, as the neighbor pointed out, the one-families that are on that same side of the street to the left of it, where going all the way up Lakeview Ave, there's all one families there. So why, why is it, why is it one, why is it one family? Why are we two-family and not one-family?
I appreciate the question. The answer gets to, you know, what's there now? And actually, some of the things that you alluded to, you know, goes to the cost factor of redeveloping this site. There's going to be the tear-down and demolition of the two structures, there's the cost of, you know, building the type of building that's being proposed, you know, and that is, you know, that's an economic consideration. So from the perspective that we're, we're putting a two-family there, but right now there's, you know, this was a site that was always a multiple-use site. There was a, there was a dwelling and there was a commercial bakery. And then that, you know, and, and so the impact of a two-family compared to a single-family and a commercial bakery would be less. And, and we can't ignore, you know, the, the fact to say, okay, gee, you know, do this same type of, you know, architectural detail and all the, everything, you know, associated with it, but, you know, cut it in half and have it a single-family, you know, at some point, the question is, you know, do the, do the numbers work? Do they justify the type of level of development that we're proposing here? And level not in terms of overburdening the, the lot, but level in terms of the type of, you know, details that were, was explained and replicate in certain details of other houses on the street. So I, I get and I understand the, the want and desire to have, you know, a one-family, but I, I think taking in the overview of going from a site with a single-family and a commercial building that was there, and then putting a two-family and the nature of the, you know, degree of, you know, improvement that is going to be carried out there, you know, that, that's, you know, I, I think a fair request from that perspective. I mean, that, that, that would be our, you know, that, that's our view relative to the, the need for the two-family.
Yep. I mean, I could totally understand the economic part of it as well, especially, like you said, because there's two separate structures on that, on that piece of property that would need to come down in order to accomplish what you're trying to do. But I guess I'm struggling with the part of it of being, is zoning going to be satisfied by this, especially in light of what's surrounding, what's in the surrounding neighborhood or the surrounding area, the size of the lot, and all other aspects. A couple of the things I was wondering as well, maybe you can clarify, and they did mention, one of the butters did mention the possibility of putting a fence up on the, I guess, which is the side, the side closest to the, let's, let's call, let's call what you gave us a old breakdown, and it was, you highlighted Broton, Broton Ave, but that doesn't appear to be the correct one. It looks like it's best, actually down closer to Fulton Street, formerly called Bear...
I highlighted the wrong one, then I put an arrow, I put an arrow and an asterisk.
Oh, okay. Bear, I guess formerly called Beherl, Beherl Street, B E H A R R E L L, or Beherl Ave. And just for the, I didn't try to look it up on the city's GIS records, and I don't see any Beherl Ave that's listed. I mean, again, I don't know if the city's still considering it as a street or not, or maybe possibly a paper street at all.
I think it's one of these things, when you look at the 1907, 1916 plan, and it was referred to as a Meramec, Meramec Manufacturing Company, which had the mills behind there, and then they took all that for the layout of the VFW. My guess is that, you know, again, that's why we, we haven't made use of that, because that's something to be resolved. My thought would be that that's probably something that was in access to the Meramec Mills site and probably part of that. And then when they took it, it was just this area, and it was probably used by everyone, you know, before the VFW went in there.
Yeah.
And then it was designated a 49 layout for the taking, and, you know, it's not uncommon to have situations where no one really knows, and that's, you know, you end up in land court with, let the judge try to figure out, okay, who has it, who owned it, who made use of it, you know? And so, as I say, that's why, again, to emphasize, we were absolutely making no use of any of this area, because we, we clearly can't say, oh, we have a right to it.
Yeah.
We can't say that.
Yep. I guess my question would be, one of the, the butter, one of the people who spoke in opposition mentioned possibility of putting a fence. I know you already have, like, on the, on the plans, it looks like some trees available and possibly putting a fence up at all on, on that side. From what I'm looking at, even on the, the Google Maps site, looking at that street, I see that there's a, it looks like a metal fence that the church has on their side. There's nothing on the other side as far as Lakeview Avenue is concerned on, yeah, it's just pretty much all the building, it's going all the way down, and then it looks like the church on their side has, you have a metal fence, correct? Yeah. Is there, is there a possibility on, on your client's end that they could possibly put a fence up on this side?
Yes, I, I mean, looking at, I'm not sure what sheet this, I think is L1, there is a gap that I think was referred to by the representative of the church, but we could certainly bring that landscaping all the way down to cover up that area that the concern is...
Yeah, and I did see there was an opening, a slight opening on the back end there before you get to the parking.
And if you...
It looked like it was, yeah, it looked like it was an opening. I see there was some landscaping going across with grass and looks like boxwood perennials. And then, then there's an opening, and then the grass again, and I mean, I'd like to close that opening out.
If it would, if it would be satisfactory to the board, we could bring the landscaping all the way along that line and put a, a fence along that entire boundary line.
Okay.
Yeah, again, because, you know...
I would, I mean...
We don't need, we, we're not utilizing that in any way for the presentation.
Landscape and fencing. Okay, I would, I would, considering that, I would probably, would ask that be added as a condition to the, to, to any variance granted, so. And as far as snow removal, I'm sorry, so what's the plan for snow removal again? Offsite or...
We would, you know, we would agree to a condition that says that if we're unable, you know, if the snow storage on-site impedes with the parking, that we would remove it, have, have it removed from the site.
All right. Yep, that's all I have for now, so I'll listen to my other fellow board members and, you know, see where we go from there. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Sean Dennis.
To me, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to ask a couple of questions, but I don't see enough information here on the plan to answer basic questions. But I don't see enough information here on the plan to answer basic questions such as, what are you providing for usable open space per dwelling unit? That's not documented as far as I can see it. If you could show me where it is, that'd be helpful, because we're asking for a variance on that specific matter, but you don't describe what, how much of a variance we're asking for. I think it's 1,000 square feet of open area per dwelling unit that's required. Is that correct, Dylan? 500 per dwelling unit?
I believe so. 500 per dwelling unit.
Right. So, and that, that's measured inside of setbacks, is that correct?
I believe it needs, they need to be, the space needs to be at least 10 feet wide. I, I think it can be within the setback, though.
So, so we have no diagram showing exactly what we're providing for usable open space per dwelling unit that meets the criteria of the zoning, as far as I can see it. Is that correct?
I don't, I don't have, I don't see that material here, so.
Yet, that's a variance that's being asked for. So we're being asked to make a variance on something that's not described as far as how much of a variance we're being asked to make. Is that correct?
I mean, it wouldn't be without that.
Yeah, that's, that's the information typically goes on the surveyor's site plan, and the surveyor has not provided it, but it's very easy to calculate that. I know you're not supposed to do that, but we can, we have a pretty good idea what the difference is from the allowed to the proposed. That would be shown on the proposed site plan. That's the info which is not there currently.
So you have a diagram that you presented that shows the usable area per dwelling unit that you're providing?
We have the floor areas of the dwellings indicated on the architecturals. We also have the footprint of the building indicated on the, on the site plan by the surveyor. We also have the lot coverage on the surveyor's drawing. But those are things we'll be, we'll be, we'll be providing once we establish a direction how the variances will proceed. And whether the variance consideration is subject to what the difference is from the allowed to the proposed, we may provide that if that's a condition. Or you may establish a criteria regarding that situation.
Counsel, could you please answer the question? Do we know what the lot area per dwelling unit, usable open area, dwelling unit is?
It appears that there's not an exact calculation at this time, but, you know, it's something that certainly could be calculated and could be provided to the board for a definitive.
Well, could be, but you're here asking for a variance for that particular matter without describing what you're asking for.
Yeah.
So you're looking for the board to grant a variance without knowing what you're asking for? At, at least that's how I see it. Is that correct, counsel?
Well, I would say that if it's something that is missing from the plans as presented, it's something that we could do, you know, if necessary.
Well, it seems like an incomplete application.
Pardon me?
It seems like an incomplete application. If you're asking for a variance without describing what you're asking for, how can we possibly provide a variance? Or not provide a variance? How can we rule on that?
Okay. If I could just ask for one moment, please?
If the plan is to be, so we can ask the rest of the nation to, to change it, that's more important than, or the condition of whatever is there. I mean, we're not talking about 5% difference, 1% difference. Maybe a little, your conscience can reduce the, 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 the. So, 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 so,[996.12]
Attention to the fact that maybe we have problems with the way the drawings are drawn. But I find this to be an incomplete application, in my opinion. And I can't, I can't rule to give you a variance without knowing what kind of variance we're asking for regarding usable open space per dwelling unit, for instance. But when I see a plan that doesn't even fit on the property with an overhang that's over the property line, I'm just floored with how loose this is. This doesn't seem to make... Anyway, I'm frustrated because we've been looking at this petition for a number of months now. I think September came before us. This is January, and we don't have a complete application, in my mind. I'm very upset that we are still talking about this now with all the time and potential effort that could have been spent to correct these issues. Because I love the idea of developing this lot. I love the idea of this going forward. I love the idea of a two-family on this lot, or a single-family, whatever it is. But I love the idea of the development happening here. I would love to support it. But I can't see this application as being correct. It doesn't, to me, meet the measure that's required from information for reasonable decision from myself as a member of the zoning board. So I see this as incomplete. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. While I believe that we all would agree that the site is in desperate need of investment, but I must concur with my colleague, Mr. McCarthy. I can't render any judgment, and as a result, will withhold any questions until this petition has been reworked. My suggestion would be that, one, it has to be reworked from the point of a complete application, and I believe Mr. McCarthy clearly indicated where he believes that the petition is deficit, deficient. And secondly, I think that it may save us all some time if the proposal is also reworked in terms of its scale, the size. Those are my comments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mark. Judge?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do take my fellow board members' comments seriously and opinions, and I do echo their sentiments. I think that it is, it could give the impression of an overkill because of the magnitude of what's being built. And as Member McCarthy said, you know, it looks like three bedrooms, two baths for all of these units. Looking at one of the renditions that were on the site plan, four parking spaces. I mean, parking is going to be a problem. Snow removal is going to be a problem. And I believe the butters had mentioned about the streets. One of the things that I'd be curious about is that Mr. Curlup mentioned, speaking to the engineer, that that street is no longer considered part of the city, I guess, or ownership. And my concern would be, well, who owns it? Because if you purchased that property, does that mean that that becomes a private driveway? I don't know. I think I'd like to get a little bit more information from the engineers to what that means, so that I could, you know, consider... Because if you also have to have people who are in opposition saying they're concerned about the constituents that come to church, and they would like you to build a fence, and you're building houses that big, again, I don't know if it's, if it would be fitting for the neighborhood. And the fact that we don't have enough information on the variances, what it's for, again, I think it's not something that I can make an intelligent decision on. The other thing I would recommend, and I don't know if this has happened yet, but maybe the property owners can consult with the neighbors. There's a neighborhood group there, which typically you would want to approach the neighborhood group and let them know what your intentions are, so that at least they can get an understanding, and maybe they can, you know, offer some additional opinions. So... But that's my opinion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Judge. Robert?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not going to belabor what has been said here, but I too agree that the structure is really too large for this lot. The lot coverage per dwelling space should be 35% of the lot area, and I don't believe it meets that. And also, like Member McCarthy said, the green space requirement per dwelling unit, I don't think meets the 500 square feet. I also see we have a basement, first floor, second floor. I see windows in the attic, you know. I don't know what the intention was for the attic, so I would... I agree that this lot needs to be... It's blighted, and it would be nice to improve it, but I think the whole design should be rethought and application, you know, improved. That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you, Robert. Well, I've listened to my colleagues, and I've been provided some information. So Counsel, I... Unfortunately, you're in a position here. I think you were brought in late to the dance, so to speak. And we are now... This is the fourth time this has been...
Five, one, eight, ten.
Yeah.
One, two, three, yep.
This is the fourth time this petition has been in front of this board. Subsequently, when we spoke in the last meeting on the continuance, it became a public access issue, and we did make it clear that we were going to move forward. The issue I have is procedural, and the issue I have is precedent, and the issue I have is putting the board in a precarious position. And I'm not saying that falls on you. Is Mr. Cortez here?
Yes, he is, Mr. Chairman.
Is he able to come to?
Sure.
I just... He or...
Yeah.
Is he under... Is he able to come?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, just in terms of...
So I guess, I guess I'll cut... I guess what I'll say is this. This board has been functioning for a long time with longstanding members. We've always prided ourselves as a board, with our citizens, the petitioners, and with the office, to be prepared and be complete. The frustration, and quite frankly, the disregard for the process here is... It generally is educational. It's generally not informed, or it's not being represented properly. But it's frustrating when I look back at a petition, and it's here for the fourth time. And to your credit, you're taking this on, and I understand that. However, it's creating so many different pockets of angst, if you will, in putting the board in the process behind the light, and that's not the process. I mean, everybody wants that... I mean, we all know. We've all been driving by that piece of property for 40 years, so everyone knows. The parishioners, the church members, the directors, the boards, they've been living with it. They've been maintaining that road. I understand there's a road issue. This just is not lining up. And frankly, a continuance is not in order here. It is going to set a bad precedent by this board, and, you know, my role, my responsibility, is not to place the board, as my colleagues have made it very clear from my understanding, that it's time to move on. This isn't... No, sir, the public hearing is closed. This isn't a matter of what is right, what is wrong. This is a matter of procedural process. So I would strongly recommend you take a minute to check with your clients in the hall. And the recommendation would be to withdraw without prejudice, put a new plan together with your expertise, and in fairness to Mr. Cortez, I think he may have got into the game not understanding all the requirements, not understanding the ask for all the setbacks, and the scope and the size. It's just one... This is just one of those properties where, in my opinion, I don't think we just move forward and put something there because of the dilapidation and because of, you know, the issue on the site. I think the site, all that has to come back to all of us, and we're all responsible for that. Quite frankly, I've been on this board... I don't want to age myself, but I think I had hair when I came here. But I can tell you, I've never had a continuance. I've never seen a continuance go more than two out. And that has been... That was precedent set by prior chairman and prior boards, that the process of the board and the process of petitions and for the citizens is to be smooth and be amicable, and to be the process that's defined by the law. So that's my recommendations. I can hear it from my colleagues, and I think it would be in your best interest, and I think it'd be more important in the best interest of your client, to get him out from underneath the undefined process in which he probably really didn't fully understand in the first place. I'm not being disingenuous, but this is a... These are elaborate processes, zoning board and variances. We all know that. This isn't something you can just come in, and especially a property that, you know, we can't hang under the guise of a... Because it's got the X on it, and we want it in, and tax stolen, all the positive stuff, that's great. But in order to get there, we can't compromise us. So the voice of the board, which I'm very familiar of their callings, is that you can move forward with the vote tonight, which you can... You don't need tea leaves here tonight. Or you can take a moment and try to explain to your client in the hall in privacy what this will allow him to do. Because we don't want to close this for two years and have him boxed in a situation where now he's... Property tax, the neighborhood, the parishioners, we're all looking at that. He's doing the right thing. And you know what? We're happy that he's doing the right thing. I just think he needs your guidance now, because you come into the fold. You've got half a roster here, and the playbook isn't... It's not ready for primetime. There's just too, you know, there's just too many boxes that aren't checked. And I think if you reevaluate the lot, I understand 1917, I understand both components of both buildings and what you're trying to put there, but if you're trying to evolve to a residential, I think you need to scale down. I think you need to have some compromise. And everything's a function of money and economics, I understand that. But I think there's a better resolution to this than just trying to pile on and move on, because if you choose not to go that direction, and we move towards a vote, you're a very smart man. And I understand that, you know, procedurally, I think if you were here, and I think that's going to be the benefit moving forward, that you'll be able to provide the professional expertise that really wasn't at the onset of this. And again, not to be disingenuous, it's just to fully understand, we have a lot of working components. We don't know who owns the street. City's throwing its hands up. Parish has been paying for that. You know, we can talk here tonight to say it's not going to be utilized, may not be utilized during construction, but a year from now, no one's going to be going down there making sure cars aren't parked on there, and snow's not going there. It's going to be the neighborhood and the parishioners that are going to be the ones there. They're going to have to deal with that. And for that to come back on this board, I'm not going to speak for my colleagues, but I'm going to speak for myself. If my due diligence isn't 100%, then I'm not able to move forward. So if you want to have that...
I appreciate very much. There's been some great feedback here tonight, which I take as a positive.
Oh, absolutely.
I take as a positive that we are in agreement that this is a site that needs to be redeveloped. And I think that, you know, if I... I'll have one moment with my client, but hearing everything that was said today, you know, the withdrawal without prejudice to allow us to look at all the feedback that we have here today and then do a new presentation, you know, I...
I think that's in the best interest of all. I mean, you have... The gentlemen have come here several times.
I will get the... Also to have...
There needs to be a resolution on that roadway as well. I mean, if they're maintaining that road, there's got to be an instrument, a vehicle that'll allow you to delve that out, because it's too many boxes aren't checked here.
So if I could just have two minutes, Mr. Chairman?
I was going to say, would a further research of the city with the X?
I just wanted to... Excuse me. I would like to say a few words if I can.
You say... State your name and... When you come back, because we just had a colleague have to step out for a second.
Mr. Chairman, just after consultation with my client, we thank you for the opportunity to have a withdrawal without prejudice. And just talking to, you know, my clients also, to convey to the board that, you know, the continuations, the continuances, this is a new process for them in that there was absolutely no... You know, they're concerned that it was taken as, you know, a... You know, there was no intention to have any slight or disrespect to the board or any board members, and, you know, we were fully cognizant of the work that the board does. I actually had hair when I first started doing this work, so that shows the impact that...
No. And certainly, we understand that. But I will say, and I do appreciate that, it's the process. It's not the board, it's not the individuals sitting here, it's the process and the legality of it, and you can certainly appreciate that.
But please accept the...
We certainly do.
...representation that there was absolutely no intent to have any sign of...
The only reason I brought it up and the concern was, is that the first hearing, we had no... There was no petitioner here. No one spoke on this. There was no communication. It was an empty chair. So we're going to move on from this. We'll make a motion to accept the withdrawal without prejudice. Look at your project, do your due diligence, you know, help them through the process. It is a very task-driven, tedious process that you have to be really involved in. And I do appreciate that, and I would strongly recommend you trade informations, exchange informations with the gentleman here and others to at least come up with a common agreement to their point of the road and the access, and be... Have some continuity there. With that being said, any other comments from the board? Am I being heard? May I have a motion?
Mr...
Oh, sorry.
No, I was just going to say, I would... I echo your sentiments, but I would also encourage maybe they meet with the neighborhood groups.
Great, great addition. There is a low-ascendable neighborhood group. I'm sure that we have the contact numbers in the office, and my feelings will be that your phone will be ringing in the next couple of days. Thank you very much, Judge. Appreciate that. Sean, motion, please.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2021-34 for 242 Lakeview Avenue to withdraw the petition without prejudice.
May I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Mr. McCarthy. May I have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin?
Approve the withdrawal without prejudice, accept.
Vice Chairman Peck?
Approve the withdrawal without prejudice.
Member Callahan?
Approve withdrawal without prejudice.
Member McCarthy?
Approve the withdrawal without prejudice.
Member Briere?
Approve withdrawal without prejudice.
Member Proko?
Approve the withdrawal without prejudice.
Member Nuroke? Approve the withdrawal without prejudice.
Well, there, Counsel, we have a fresh slate, and we appreciate your time, your comments. We appreciate the members of the public coming tonight and speaking on behalf of us, and we certainly appreciate the petitioner. He's the one with the skin in the game. He's the one with the money. He's the one that wants to make this work, and please guide him through that process, because I think a scaled-back version of this will be much better served, and there'll be less issues and problems moving forward. But thank you, Mr. Cortez. We do want you to know that you taking your time and money to invest in the city law is something that we look at and we appreciate, but procedure and process always comes first. Okay? Thank you. Have a good evening. Moving forward on the new business, ZBA 2021-64, special permit express car and truck rental, 1625 Middlesex Street, Section 6.3. Express Car and Truck Rental has applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for special permit approval to erect an internally illuminated sign at 625 Middlesex Street. The property is located in the Regional Retail RR zoning district and requires special... Gentlemen, if we could go to the hallway for your personal business, that would be helpful. Special permit under Section 6.3, if any other relief required under the lower zoning ordinance. Is there a representative from Express Car and Truck Rental?
How you doing? My name's John Peterson.
Good evening, sir. How are you?
I'm on behalf... Good, thank you. I'm on behalf of Metro signing awning for 1625 Middlesex Street. The current sign that they have there is split between Express Car Rental and U-Haul. U-Haul has actually left the shared office location. And Express is just looking to have their own sign in there. The proposed signage is approximately 32 square feet, which fits in the parameters of Middlesex Street. And this will be an illuminated sign, and it will not shine any direct light onto any adjacent properties. It will not be flashing or moving.
Is that it? I lose them?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Like to open up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor that portion of public hearing is now closed? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Like to open up to the board, Sean?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chairman. I mean, this seems to make sense, especially, I mean, it's basically taking the portion of the U-Haul sign, just extending it now for the full of Express Car and Truck Rental to be set forth. So it doesn't appear to be any change in scale, maybe a little bit, but not too much. It's internally illuminated, I guess the question... One question we have, what are the hours of operation, and what's the plan, this like hours for illumination?
I'll have to check the exact hours of operation, but they will only have it illuminated while they're open. I don't think they're open past 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock at night.
We usually, when we, you know, set the hours of illumination, we usually do one hour before sunrise to one hour after sunset or close of business, whichever comes later. That's usually what our standard is when we set these, if that's something you think a client would be agreeable to.
Yeah, actually, I just pulled up the website. They're open 8:00 to 6:00, and then, you know, 8:00 to 1:00 on Saturday.
Okay. So, yeah, if you think your client will be agreeable to that, probably we would ask that be the condition added on to for the hours of illumination, so... Other than that, I would find favorable on this project, so... Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Thank you, Sean. Dennis?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple of questions, but I think this makes a lot of sense. The existing sign, is that illuminated now?
I don't know if it's up there now. Just... Sorry, I had my plans in front of me and...
It doesn't seem like it is. I just want to make sure that... So we're going to a sign that's not illuminated and making it illuminated? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then you said the U-Haul is operating completely out of the other side of the street at their current site. They're not going to be operating out of this site at all?
Yeah, they've left the shared office location they have over there.
Yep, yep. Perfect. So now we have no confusion where the U-Haul is, and we have an illuminated sign that looks like a very clean graphic, so I wish you all the luck. I can support this. Nice presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dennis. Robert?
Mr. Chairman, I have no questions or comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Judge?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I... Again, I think this is pretty standard. I can support this with no problem. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Judge. Van, Mr. Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, sir, it's straightforward in terms of what they want and marketing for the business, so I wish them well, and thank you for coming to the city law.
Thank you, Van. Mark?
No questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. So, sir, we have one condition on hours of operation, which is standard set by this board, and you're in agreements with that. That being said, Mr. Clark may have a motion.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2021-64 for 1625 Middlesex Street for variance approval, for a special permit approval to erect an internally illuminated sign, with the condition that the hours of illumination will be one hour before sunrise to one hour after sunset or close of business, whichever comes later.
May I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Member McCarthy. May I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Perrin?
Approve.
Vice Chairman Peck?
Approve.
Member Callahan?
Approve a condition.
Member McCarthy.
Approve with condition.
Member Briere.
Approve.
Member Proko.
Approve with condition.
And Member Nuroge.
Approve with condition.
Sir, you've been approved, we wish you the best of luck, thanks for coming in.
Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, take care. Moving forward on to other business, we have a variance extension request of 50 Wentworth Ave. The applicant is seeking a variance extension for one year for their variance approval issued on January 20, 2021, they are seeking an extension of January 20, 2022. Is there a representative for the petition here? A representative on Zoom or online?
Hello?
Hello, good evening.
Hi, good evening.
Could you state your name and address?
Yes, this is Quinny Lee, I am here for Tan Pham, my spouse, my husband, he is under the weather today, so I am here for him. We are asking for the variance extension of building our home at 50 Wentworth Avenue in Lowell for another year.
Okay, thank you. That being said, Mr. Clark, may I refer to you for your comments?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I know you're asking for a year, and maybe Dylan, I want to double-check on this, because I know we have in the past granted some extensions on these variances, but I was looking it over, I'm looking over the statute under, on Section, generalized chapter 48, Section 10, and it looks like we can only grant variances for six months at a time, that's my understanding, I just, do you have any clarification on that, or is that in the zoning bylaws, or?
I thought you could extend it for a year, but if you see otherwise, you may be correct, so I'm not sure of the exact answer.
What did you say?
I'm sorry, I can't, some-
It was my understanding that you could extend it for a year, if you're seeing otherwise, I may be wrong, so.
Yeah, might be something else to look into, I don't know if you want to, it's not something a request of the Law Department, but double-check with them maybe, but I'm reading the end of chapter, Section 10 of Chapter 48, and it basically says, "The permanent granting authority in its discretion upon written application by the grantee of such rights may be extended time to exercise such rights," meaning the variance, "for a period not to exceed six months." So, I don't think we can extend any, make any extensions past six months, that's my understanding. So, to the applicant, I know you're asking for a year, and I understand there's pending, a pending appeal with the Superior Court in this matter, but I think for the purposes of your request, at this time, we can only grant you six months, if that's something, that's something you want to comment on?
Yes, the reason for one year is, like you just said, is this under a, another court, so I'm afraid six months won't be enough if we're granting six months right now after the six-month period, is there another chance for us to extend it more?
See, the, I think the statute is a little unclear on that, but why don't we go, if I would suggest we go with the six months for now, and if things are still pending with the appeal, go, they can make another request before the board, to come before the board for another extension, right, Dylan?
Yes.
Yes, I believe they can be granted another extension, I wouldn't-
Also, in the meantime, I looked up the docket on the appeal, Dylan, and maybe you wanted, well, not since we, we probably do have to talk to the Law Department about it, because when I looked up the appeal that was filed on this property with the Superior Court, I didn't see any appearance filed by the city on behalf of the board, so.
Yeah, I don't know the status of the DPD.
Okay, so I think it's something we should probably double-shot with the, with the Law Department, and I guess check with them as to why nothing's been filed on behalf of the board, as far as an appearance by the city, because they're supposed to be representing us, understandably, right?
Yeah.
Because all members of the board are parties to that action-
Yeah.
-as well as the city, so I would probably suggest reach out to the Law Department on that end, and then as far as the, and in the interim, maybe try to get their, not, we don't need a formal opinion, but what their thoughts are on the statute, and whether we can only grant extensions for six months at a time.
Yeah, I can check on that, and I'm sure the, I'm sure the Law Department is aware of the appeal and are not-
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. So, I think we have two underlying issues here, one, we should get the Law Department involved, as Mr. Clark has indicated, related to the suit, as well as to, you know, us moving forward on a six-month extension request. I did, I did some due diligence as well, just to follow up on that, my, my log, my previous role as clerk, we've never, we've never done a one-year out on this, so I'd like to stay consistent with past precedent of the board. Any other comments or concerns by the board? Mr. Vice Chair, Mr. Briere? None being heard, I'd like to seek a motion for a six-month extension.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, let me get the ZB number here, yep, on ZB 2020-42 for 50 Wentworth Ave, to extend the variance approval for six months.
May I have a second?
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by Robert, Jerry, thank you. May I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Perrin.
Approve six-month extension.
Vice Chair Peck.
Approve the six-month extension, of course.
Member Callahan.
Approve six-month extension of variance approval.
Member McCarthy.
Approve the six-month extension.
Member Briere.
Approve extension.
Member Proko.
Approve the six-month extension.
Member Nuroge.
Approve the six-month extension.
So, ma'am, you've been, you've been extended for six months, we wish you the best of luck moving forward, as stated, if needed, due to the circumstances in litigation, watch the timeline and calendar, and if we need to make a, you may need to make another submittal for an extension. Thanks for coming in.
Yes, I will, thank you.
Just to clarify, I believe that's, is that that six-month extension runs from the expiration date of the initial approval, correct?
Correct, the new expiration date would be in June.
Yeah, if you just let the, if you let the applicant know when the next, when the next expiration date is, that they also, if nothing's done, they have to come back in well before for the next extension request, if that's what's going to be done, so. Did you get that, ma'am?
Yes, thank you, I got that.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Thank you, have a good night.
Moving forward on to other business, we have a discussion for maximum of agenda items per meeting, the board shall discuss the possibility of us ensetting a rule that would limit the numbers of agenda items that are scheduled for each ZBA meeting. This time I'd like to defer to Mr. McCarthy, who did his due diligence on behalf of the board on this agenda item, Mr. McCarthy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My understanding is that since this is posted for the second hearing, we can then have discussion again on this matter, and if we choose to, to vote to go forward with a decision to add, add a change to the rules tonight. And I think what I'd like to see is that we have no more than six items on the agenda, including continued business, and see how that goes. As an example, tonight, we're on our fourth item, and we'll be close to two hours, and one of them was-
It's relatively-
Running out. Oh, it came back.
The microphone battery or?
It came back. As we can see tonight, we're on our fourth item, and we'll be close to two hours, and one of them was illuminated sign, which typically are not lengthy items in front of us, so I think having a three-hour window for us to participate in a public hearing for the zoning Board of Appeals as members is a reasonable ask, but not much more than three hours. I think getting out somewhere between, you know, 9:30 and 10:00 o'clock is a lot to ask from members on a regular basis, so I'd like to see us hold it to six items, including continued business, going forward.
Thank you. I'd like to open up to the board, Van?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, sir, you know, I know we talked about it a little bit at the last meeting, too, I mean, I'm open to six, but I'm also even open to like five, I choose four to five as well, as, as Mr. McCarthy just said, you know, we technically only have four items tonight, with extensions and, you know, like a sign, a sign approval, and that took, you know, close to two and a half, almost three hours, so I think even limiting it to five or four or five, I would be supportive of that, too. But, you know, whatever my colleagues want, you know, I'll support that, too. Those are my comments, Mr. Chairman, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chairman, I think I'm in agreement that we try to limit these, try to limit the list for, you know, six seems like an optimal amount, I think that including the continued business as well, and I think Dylan, as far as you guys, you know, it might need some tracking, that's going to have to be done on your guys' end, as far as scheduling, getting the agenda set, scheduling, and keeping in mind the possibly only continuances that the board may schedule, so I don't know, maybe that's something you can talk to Fran about and work around, you know, give you, maybe schedule four, give yourselves a buffer for possibly two continuances that may, that may be coming from the board, so we kind of keep a, keep an area of about six or so. I don't know, you have any, do you have any thoughts on that, or is that something?
Yeah, so the planning board currently has a maximum, so typically, we track all the, all of the applications for each meeting, and so, once that meeting fills up, even if an application comes in before the deadline, we let them know that it has to go on the following meeting. Typically, with the planning board, what we do when an application needs a continuance, prior to the meeting, we will let the chairman know whether there's space on the next meeting for a continued item, if there isn't, then it would be continued to the nearest meeting with space.
Okay.
We can do that, or we could leave open spaces for continuances.
All right. But the board, but the board should still maintain some flexibility as well in that instance, if we get something that's a very simple matter, that if we're going to be going in excess of one meeting, I say limit it to six, but if it comes to the point, we should maintain some minor flexibility on something to continue it to a next meeting, if it's something very minor that we really need, so, but I'm all for limiting it to six, so, thank you.
Thank you, Sean, Mark?
I support the six-item limit, thank you.
Thank you. Judge?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dylan, did I hear you say that the planning board has a maximum?
Yes.
How much?
Their maximum is three, but their, their applications are typically larger, so-
I'm sorry, I didn't even hear you say-
Oh, sorry, they have a three-application maximum, but their applications are typically larger, because they typically have site plan reviews.
Understood, yeah, I agree with, you know, limiting the number, I mean, as Dennis mentioned tonight, look at, look at what we had, you know, we had one continued item that took over an hour, and we had one new business that took five minutes, I mean, I mean, you know, obviously, we're here to serve the people, but the people may not benefit if they waited an hour just to talk for five minutes. So, yeah, I think this is something we should, you know, try to cater to, because it's not just about us as well, you know, being here, but it's, again, the people in wait, you know, for approval, or, you know, whatever, that's needed from the board, so, yes, I definitely think we should cater to keeping it concise, and I think that would just make things more efficient. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Judge, Robert?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, it would seem to echo what George has said, you know, I think it would objectively, we might, the DPD might want to schedule some of these businesses, such as various extensions and sign permits, you know, this kind of the building, building kind of petitions, but yeah, I agree on the six, six-limit agenda, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Judge. So, I agree, I mean, we need to be cognizant of diligence and, you know, serving, serving the public, and I don't think we will, we serve the public when we have these extended late meetings, it's not, it's not, it just, it's not satisfactory all around, as far as making petitioners citizens at home watching and prolonging some of these, these meetings, and I think everyone's in agreeance with six as our number, we can revisit this down the line, six months a year, and see how it's going, and then work with the flexibility as Mr. Clark has recommended, so, with that being said, may I have a motion?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a, well, I'll let Dennis make the motion, if that's okay.
Mr. McCarthy, may I have a-
I have the honors.
He did his due diligence and served us well.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to amend the zoning Board of Appeals rules and regulations to adopt a rule that we limit the number of agenda items, including continued business, to six items.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second the motion.
I also second the motion, with Mr. Briere seconding his motion, and if we could get batteries. That being said, may I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Perrin.
Approve.
Vice Chairman Peck.
Approve.
Member Callahan.
Approve.
Member McCarthy.
Approve.
Member Briere.
Approve.
Member Proko.
Approve.
And Member Nuroge.
Approved.
Thank you, gentlemen, I do appreciate all, all the input and the work behind the scenes on this, I truly will value it all in the long run. Final other business agenda item, we have minutes for approval for January 10, 2022, does anyone have any comments, deletions, additions, alterations? Once again, to our DPD staff, the minutes and the information that you're providing to us is well-placed out, and very well done, very well done, I know, I appreciate as well as the other board members. No comments or concerns, may I have a motion to accept?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes for January 10, 2022.
May I have a second?
I second.
Seconded by Mr. Proko, may I have a roll call?
Accept minutes for 110, 2022.
Vice Chairman Peck.
Accept a minute.
Member Callahan.
Accept minutes for January 10, 2022.
Member McCarthy.
Accept the meeting minutes for January 10, 2022.
Member Briere.
Acceptance.
Member Proko.
Accept meeting minutes, January 10, 2022.
And Member Nuroge.
Approved meeting minutes.
Thank you, gentlemen, this time, there's no other items, any other comments or concerns by any board member?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to congratulate Dylan on his promotion to associate planner, well-deserved, so congratulations, and I know we haven't seen you, this is like your first meeting in a while, so we haven't had a chance to really wish you the, congratulations, so, good job.
Congratulations.
Well done, congratulations, you're doing well.
Well done, Dylan.
The youth and vigor in the DPD office is astounding, it's just a young, young group of professionals that are committed to their profession, and provide us with the resources and the information that we need to make these decisions, and it is greatly appreciated.
I would just like to make one request, if the planning of DPD could look into how we could avoid a conflict like we had tonight, and be able to start the meeting at the, at the time that we're supposed to be starting, 6:30, in the event that there's another televised meeting that happens at a later date, we could just look into how we could avoid that, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate the follow-up on that, open communication and notices is key, we lost 30 minutes this evening, which is concerning, and I think to Mr. McCarthy's point, with subcommittees being part of the process now, I think we need to just have that settled out, we don't want to delay our process, nor do we want to delay the citizens of the city access to public hearings. Any other concerns or comments?
Mr. Chairman, if I may-
Mr. Chairman, if I may, sir?
Oh, Mr. Vice Chairman.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'll make this brief, sir. Just to echo on some of the comments you guys just made, if we, if we're just delaying stuff, just if we can inform the people on the Zoom or virtual call, I think a lot of people were very confused, myself included. So just, you know, if whoever's hosting the Zoom or if Mr. Rick or whoever's there can just send a little message saying, there's some, some holdout, so we'll, we'll start as soon as we can. I think I, I didn't get to, to really hear anything until I contacted you guys and, and, you know, we got updates. But I appreciate that and, you know, I apologize for not being in person. If I knew we were going to be in person, I would be in person myself. So I just wanted to add that to, to the chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Well said. Any other comments or concerns?
I mean, I could just throw a chat, a notice in the chat if that ever happens again, but hopefully it won't happen again in the future.
Apologies to the...
It's a first time, it's the first time that's happened, especially with the Zoom influx of Zoom now, so it's kind of, and again, I'm hoping this, that's what happened previously with the delay doesn't happen again, but we'll see.
I mean, the, I think those are some of the pains of, you know, we're, we're very fortunate to have in-person and hybrid and now with the increased access to public notice and public hearings, we just have to coordinate a, a detailed schedule and plan a notice and that'd be greatly appreciated. Any other comments? None being heard, may I have a motion to dismiss?
Adjourn.
Adjourn.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
May I have a second?
Second motion.
Meeting is adjourned. Have a good night. Thank you.
Good night.